Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will everybody stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, some immediate business. Chuck Owen is out sick and Jermaine Corningay has to leave early. So, first, I'm going to ask for the council to make an approval to excuse both of them tonight. And Jermaine, you'll just get up and go when we're through with new business, correct? Okay. May I have a motion?
Absolutely. I move that we excuse both of these council members.
Perfect.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Dun Lee and it was seconded by Couch. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All opposed? All right. Motion carries. The second thing that we are going to do before we approve the agenda is that I have a request. Because Jermaine has to leave early and Chuck is out, I am wanting to move the new business to the top of the calendar. So, we'll do the consent agenda first and then we'll do new business. So, when we approve the agenda, could you make that motion that the new business will be moved and placed below consent agenda? May I have a motion? That make sense?
I move that we approve the consent agenda with the addition of--
Well, it would just be the agenda, not the consent agenda yet. Yeah. Sorry about that.
The agenda with the inclusion of the late material.
Okay.
I'm moving it.
No.
With the new business.
New business. Okay. That's what we're moving.
So, perhaps I worded that awkward.
So, the agenda to move new business forward.
All right.
Is that what you'd like?
Sounds good.
All right.
Second?
Second.
Okay. So, motion made by Dun Lee and seconded by, I'm not sure who got in here first.
Jermaine.
I think it was Jermaine.
All right. Jermaine. Corningay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So, now, let's move into the consent agenda. And I believe you have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I would like to make, I would like to pull Consent Agenda Number One and Number Seven, please.
Okay. And, Number Seven. So, let's do these one at a time.
Right. So, okay. I'd like to make a revision to the minutes, please.
All right. And the revision would be?
Okay. Please stand by as I bring that up. All right. On page nine of our 210-page March 28 City Council Packet under the heading of "Good of the Order" from last, from our meeting minutes, I have a request to strike the third sentence. He addressed that the plant does not emit greenhouse gas at. Instead, read, "He addressed the need for a teen center, et cetera."
Okay.
That way, it eliminates the typo and also the misheard part.
Okay.
And also, I would like to compliment our city clerk for her awesome job of taking minutes for us.
Okay. So, we have, you're asking the council to approve the corrections to the minutes from the previous meeting stated upon page nine?
Correct.
Okay. So, even though we usually take the consent agenda altogether, I'm going to take this separately. So, is there a second?
I'll second you.
All right. So, the council has first and seconded the approval of correction to the minutes from March 14th on page nine as stated by Councilman DeYoung. Any discussion?
Yeah. I was wondering if you could read that the way it's supposed to read.
I'd be happy to, for the love.
Thank you.
Yes.
The corrected version would be, "He addressed the need for a teen center for structured activities, comma sidewalk information to be included in the utility bills, et cetera."
All right. Thank you. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then, you said you wanted to strike seven?
Oh, yeah. Just pull it from the consent agenda.
Why?
Discussion?
Why?
I'd like to talk about it.
It's actually the privilege of the mayor to do that. So, either you agree with me or you disagree with me on that.
Okay. I would like to spend some time talking about the person that had the position before and give them time to shine. So, it's not, I'm sorry, I misinterpreted.
This person has already resigned from the council or from the planning commission? Yeah. That person has already resigned and so--
I understand. And I, it is up to you whether or not you would like to take seven alone.
Did anybody want to second DeYoung's motion to pull seven?
Second.
It has been moved, it has been first and seconded to pull Item Seven from the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
So, it is a tie and I get to vote and I, I'm opposed. So, it is, it will be, yeah, all of us on this side.
This side.
And the rest are for it. So, this will be, this will remain in the packet, in the consent agenda. I also want to add, you'll see in front of you, a request for the council's permission for the surplus SUV seat components that were removed from the patrol car vehicles that were outfitted with it. Anyway, have you had a chance to read this? I would like to add this to the consent agenda. Is there any discussion regarding this?
Madam Mayor, I move to add the memo from Chief Tucker regarding the surplus being of the seats to the consent agenda.
And do I have a second? Okay. So, it has been, I have a first and a second, first by Couch and then by Kinzer, to add Chief Tucker's request for the components added to the consent agenda. All right. So, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as we have discussed?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the consent agenda as amended.
Do I have a second? All right. It was moved by DeYoung and seconded by Kinzer. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. So, following suit here, we will move our new business to the list here. And Patty, that means you're up.
This budget amendment is basically of a housekeeping nature. Traditionally, the first budget amendment of the year is to adjust actual cash or beginning balances, you know, adjust the budget to actual. When we make the budget in September of the year before, we do our best guess. And some years, we have no flooding and no snow to plow and have extra cash in the street fund. And other years, we don't. And so, anyway, this year, this is our second budget amendment. You may recall, the first one was because the purchase of the library property did not occur in 2017 as originally planned. So, the budget, the '18 budget was amended to allow for that purchase. So, this budget, basically, budget amendment adjusts beginning cash to what it actually ended up being. We are very fortunate that the majority of funds had an excess of cash at the beginning of the year. The economy in Cedar Wully is picking up and we're very pleased. It makes this year much easier as a result. And the offsetting for that increase in beginning cash is adjusting ending cash by the same amount in each fund. The next budget amendment will bring to you a few things that may have created some of that excess cash as we have a couple projects that didn't get finished last year. So, we didn't spend as much money as anticipated. So, we'll have that adjustment to make in this year's budget. But that will be the next amendment. So, this is basically, as I said, a housekeeping nature.
And isn't it usually in the consent agenda? Or it has been in the past. So, it's not really much of a discussion, correct? All right. So, it's a formality. And we are looking to approve Ordinance 1895-18 and ordinance amending Ordinance Number 1890-17 entitled, "An Ordinance Adopting the Annual Budget for the City of Cedar Wully, Washington for the Fiscal Year Ending December 31st, 2018." Do we have a discussion or not? Do I have a motion?
Could you say that again?
Can we this time say, "I'd like to propose Amendment 1895-18 as stated by our mayor"?
All right. I like that.
It's actually on page, it's on page 70 of your packet.
Oh, thanks.
If you need to look at it. It's on page 70. Yeah. All right. So, I have a motion by Dun Lee to accept Ordinance 1895 as stated by myself, the mayor, and seconded by Councilwoman Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And then, Mark, I wanted to ask you about these late materials. Is this something that you would like us to address now while we still have a full council?
We can certainly do that.
All right.
You have two on your diest and iindias. The first one is a relatively simple one. We have two temporary construction easements that have been prepared by Puget Sound Energy. Puget Sound Energy is planning to build a reconductor project on the transmission main that runs the length of John Lainer and Jones Road and out McGargle to Fruitdale and then north on Fruitdale. They're going to do that shortly. They're planning to start on that and be done with the portions that will affect our Fruitdale project prior to, we are starting that work in late May. We own two parcels that the lines pass over and they are the pump station sites that you have driven by on John Lainer Road and then the one that's on Fruitdale. The way those parcels are currently configured, they extend into the right-of-way that is on either side of them, about 15 feet. PSE is, their reconductor will be extending over the parcels about five feet. And they're asking for a 10-foot temporary construction easement so they can build their work in advance of a permanent solution to that. Their original request was for a permanent easement. Our city attorney has decided that's not in our best interest because under franchise, if the utility is located in our right-of-way, we can require them to move their facilities if they conflict with future road improvements at their own cost. But if it's an easement, a permanent easement, then we have to pay them to move. And so, we didn't want to create our own mousetrap on these two little parcels. And so, Aaron is proposing to correct those areas with permanent right-of-way transfers at some point in the, in the future. But for now, so that PSE can proceed with their project, we're proposing these temporary easements. We just need your council's approval for Mayor Johnson to sign the temporary construction easements and we'll move forward with this on that basis. So, that's the request.
If there's no further discussion, I'd like to move to authorize Mayor Johnson to sign temporary construction easements for PSE, for the PSE Number Four Phase B project.
Okay. And we have a motion by Councilwoman Corningay and seconded by Councilwoman Kinzer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. And then, the second one, Mr. Freiburger?
Thank you. The second one, also marked "late materials," is titled, "Engineering Department Staffing." As you've noticed in my reports over the last few council meetings, we've got quite a bit of work to do this summer. I am becoming concerned that my engineering staff in particular will not be able to complete the in-house designs that we had intended to do in a timely enough manner that we can get the projects out to bid early in the season and be assured of decent bids. This is, this is really brought to mind with our Tuesday night meeting in conjunction with DOT. They've bid two of their Paver projects, one of which they've rejected and the other one they're considering rejecting, which unfortunately, is the SR-20, SR-9 Paver project. The reason for that is, is they only had one bid and it was very high. So, we don't want to go too much later in the season and face that risk with our own projects. What I'm proposing to do is to hire a temporary civil engineer to back up David in his design efforts. And the projects in particular that are outlined in the memo are the West Beatty Sewer Project, which you approved us moving ahead with that design in the consent counter here tonight. I can speak more to that particular project if you would like. The other projects are the 2018 Sidewalk and ADA Ramp Project, which we've been talking about for a couple of years, the State Street Overlay, and then the SR-20 Township to Fruitdale Lane Widening Project. That last one, we actually have a consultant designing it, but we were planning to do the construction engineering on it with our own staff. So, our options really are three, which I outlined on page two. We can delay some of the work until 2019. That may have some impacts on our grant funding. In particular, we have some funding for the Sidewalk and ADA Ramp Project that needs to be spent this year. So, that one really needs to go forward. We could attempt to hire more consultants to help with that. That will increase our costs by at least 10% on those projects for the design and potentially the construction engineering as well. That's not our preferred option and it may be a little difficult to get them on in a timely enough manner to help anyway at this point. Third option is to hire a temporary designer, as I mentioned. We didn't come to you tonight with something we didn't know we could do. We do have a qualified individual that we're talking to that, what we are requesting tonight is your permission to go ahead and interview that person. And if that makes, if that looks like it's a good fit for us to move ahead with making an offer on the basis that I've described in here. I've met with Patty and we've worked out a rate based on looking at the 2017 Salary Survey that AWC puts out for a semi-experienced engineer to come in and do this. And that's the person that we're looking at doing. We'll no doubt have to post this position. There may be others that are available that'll come out of the woodwork as well. That's what we're trying to attempt to do tonight. We're looking at an eight-month hire. Because of that length of time, it does kick in the need to use, to pay also the retirement system plan, which makes it a little more expensive than if it was a shorter term. But I think we're going to need it for most of the rest of the year, quite frankly, to make everything work. And so, that's what we're proposing to do. And we would request, if that makes sense to you, that you move to authorize the Public Works Department to hire a temporary civil engineer to support our 2018 capital projects program. So, if I can explain that any more clearly, I'd be glad to attempt to do that. Yes, Paula?
My question would be, are you asking us to just allow you to interview this person that you have in mind and then you're coming back to us? Or are you wanting us to give you the authority to hire that person if you believe it's the right fit?
The latter. If you feel it, it makes sense because we, this is really time-sensitive. We could come back to you at the next council meeting, but I believe I've covered all the bases here. And our hire would have to be within the limits that I've set here. And I think this is a conservative package that I put together here to do that. And so, if it's not, if it's more than that, then we would certainly come back to you.
It wasn't, it wasn't that I just wasn't sure what you were asking.
Yeah.
Okay. I have a motion and a motion by Councilwoman Kelly and seconded by Councilman DeYoung. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Motion carries. All right. That is it. Jermaine, do you need to get going?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. And safe journey.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Yeah. We wish you the best. Yeah. We wish you the best. All right. Well, we have tonight from the port, we have Patty, who is going to give us a presentation on what's happening at the Swift Center, an update. Welcome, Patty.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I appreciate your time. Well, I'm here primarily to thank all of you for your partnership over the last several years as we've worked on the Swift Center project. Actually, your former mayor actually helped us name this site. It's kind of a long, convoluted story, but now it's the Cedar Wully Innovation for Tomorrow Site. And we're pretty proud of that. We all are. But I want to tell you that on Monday of this week, our commission, the Port of Skagit Commission, voted to seek transfer on July 1st, 2018. We're thrilled with that. We're nervous about that. But we want to continue our partnership with Cedar Wully and with Skagit County and go forward and be brave and hope it's all going to work beautifully. Janiki Bioenergy is still very engaged in this process. We meet with them again on Thursday. But we're meeting regularly to work out all the details on a specific site for them to begin. They have said that they intend to enter into a lease, that they'll start paying rent in June of this year. And they'll be, it'll be for you guys to apply for a building permit in January of 19 and start construction in July of 19. So, we're thrilled with all of that. But all of the parts, the $5 million investment and commitment to investment has been made up of the partnership. The Fruitdale Road improvements are a part of that. The environmental work that we described tonight, that many of you saw is part of that. Some of Skagit County's work on behavioral health is part of that. It's, it wouldn't have been possible if it was just one of us doing this alone. So, oh, and Janiki was part of that, too, I will say, that they have invested their own money into that process to make it work. So, we're continuing to work, though, on the environmental contamination. It's not cleaned up yet. We still need to finish the characterization, develop some cleanup action plans and figure out what we're going to do and how that's going to work. There's still, Behavioral Health needs to have its new home, both the Substance Abuse Disorder Facility in Pioneer and the Evaluation Treatment Center. They both need to be relocated. The Port Commission is willing to give them transition time of up to three years for the Substance Abuse Disorder Facility and three years with the potential of two one-year options for the Evaluation Treatment Center. So, that's where we are on that part of it. Like I said, we will continue to work with Janiki. We will continue to work with the Upper Skagit Tribe, who has great interest in the site and what we're doing. We'll continue to work on making sure that we're a good neighbor to the environmental areas like Hanson Creek and the kids' fishing pond and whatnot. We want to make sure that those continue into the future. But we're a very small staff. There's 26 of us. So, we're going to hire three new maintenance staff members. We'll give preference in hiring to those employees currently on the site as we go forward. But they will join, whomever's hired will join our current maintenance team because that's the way we operate. They will respond to wherever they are needed. And we'll continue to push forward into the future. We're excited about it and again, look forward to our continuing work together. Now, when we take title on June 30th, 2018 at midnight or July 1st at, you know, 12:01, there are two pieces of property we would like to give to the City of Cedar Wully. One is the cemetery. We are not cemetery people and that's more of a city function. So, we would love to pass that straight through to you and looking for the state to, for some dollars to try to help maintain that for the city's perspective. The second piece is a 12-acre piece that surrounds the pond as you come into the site. It could potentially, well, I think more than potentially, it could be a park for the city. It would be great from our perspective, but again, we're not really park people either. We like the economic development stuff. That's our niche. So, we would love to be able to do that. I know that this is moving pretty quickly, but in our minds, if that could work for you guys, that would be our perfect world. And then, it goes straight to you guys. We would share parking on the site. We need people to be able to park there to walk in as we get our public access plan going there. But that's kind of what's in our minds. Here to answer any questions you might have, if you could think of any.
I'm glad I stuck around to hear that. That's great news. Thank you.
We're excited, Jermaine. We are.
I'm excited about it, too. You know, having grown up in Cedar Wully, it's that there were a lot of people who worked up there. I knew a lot of people who worked up there. My grandmother was a nurse up there.
Wow.
So, for me, it's almost, it feels like a coming home for Northern State, the Swift Center.
That's nice. No, it's very nice. But again, I want to thank, I'm sorry, Aaron couldn't be here tonight, but Aaron's been instrumental in it. Tim Halloran and the county commissioners. Heather Roderson from my staff is here. She's been incredible. And then, the two state folks. Ann Sweeney, who's been assigned to this project and, oh, she popped in? Uh-huh. Yes, Missy. Yeah. She's been amazing. And Chris Liu, the head of Enterprise Services. Without their leadership at the state level, this would not have happened either.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you so much for sticking around. Okay. Thank you.
I'll be there.
So, let's see. Where are we at here? Staff reports. Chief Tucker?
So, first off, those of you who may have heard, we had Secretary of Interior Zinke here last Friday. And we had about 75 protesters showed up for that. The whole thing went exactly is, there were like 20 cops there and 60 or 70 protesters. And we were just really prepared for, just in case we had some weird agitators show up. But the people there that were protesting were exactly what you'd expect from Cedar Wully people and local people showing up. They were very appropriate and they got their point across. And we all froze our butts off and then they went home. And we went home. It was a pretty good day. But everything went off without a hitch and everybody was very appropriate. Yesterday, we had oral boards for new officers. We interviewed 10 different applicants. And the school district helped out. The sheriff's office helped out, as did the 911 center. They came in and sent our oral boards. So, we got, we currently have a pool of 12 people that we're looking at for officer positions. I have one position I need to fill. And we plan on pulling somebody from the current list that we have right now. But another thing that's, we're planning on, and it's something that Aaron's been in the works with, with the school district at their request, was the potential for a school resource officer. Aaron and the mayor have been in talks with the school district, trying to figure out a selling point for that and having the school district pay a significant portion of that. But if we, if we get to that point, we'll need to backfill a position that we would put one of our current officers in. So, we got the potential to hire two, two people off this list. It was kind of exciting. Many of you may have heard about the fire that was in town last night. So, just a thumbnail version of that. About 1:00 in the morning, we had a report of a fire. Fire units went out and when the fire, when the firefighters entered the building, they found the homeowner down on the ground. They brought her out, tried to resuscitate her and were unsuccessful. And put the fire out, did all their stuff. We've had fire investigators, we're in there all morning, trying to locate the point of origin, which appears to be in the kitchen. And from all of our investigations so far, everything's pointing to, the fire started in the kitchen and most likely, the house was completely engulfed in smoke when the homeowner woke up and was probably disoriented by the smoke. Apparently, there's evidence she tried to exit through the front door, was overwhelmed and just didn't make it out. It's kind of a sad, sad deal. Sergeant Harris got called back into service. He knew the folks that lived there and his son was really good friends with one of the kids that was there. And that's where most of the folks are right now. Dean's in with doing a critical inspection. Dean's in with, doing a critical incident stress management. They got all the fire police that were wanting the chance to kind of decompress. We've got the team in here from the county that's, and they're kind of helping them walk through all that. But it was a pretty significant event and affected a lot of people. That's a very nice little neighborhood down there, and I think that a lot of people were devastated, and it was, it was a big deal. Dean also wanted me to point out, he attended a Department of Emergency Management meeting. I can't tell you how excited he was for that two-and-a-half-hour meeting he said he went to. He said something about, they accomplished the schedule for the next meeting at this meeting, and there's something about he's not going to get those two-and-a-half hours back. I don't know what he meant by that.
[laughing]
He didn't seem happy, so I, it may have been because he was up at 1:00 this morning and was out and about all day. This Saturday, we have a Veterans Day Parade and a Caesar Chavez Parade that are organized. I'm going to be out of town, but I got one of my sergeants, and Sergeant Blunt is going to have her crime watchers out there, and they're going to be helping manage the little parade route. It's a very nice little parade, it's a Vietnam Veterans Parade. They leave from right north of the high school, go up Metcalf Street, make a loop through the downtown, and then end up at the Legion. And if you get a chance to wave on our veterans, and the Caesar Chavez Parade is going to just kind of dovetail with that, and going to be at a similar timeframe, I think. Apparently, the two didn't talk, and they're going to have a parade kind of at the same time. I think one parade would be awesome, but we're going to have like two parades going at the same time. So, but we'll be managing that one up and working on that. And we are just busy, busy, busy. There's always something going on, and it's, we're about wore out. We need a good weekend of no weird stuff, or fires, or protests, or Secretaries of Interior showing up. It'd be nice to just have a quiet weekend.
Thank you. I, just on behalf of the city, want to thank you and the Fire Department. You work especially hard for us, and on behalf of the city, thank you very much. While you do.
And just for all of you that noticed, I mean, we're probably the most obvious ones you see out there working, but if you see poor Nathan wandering around here, that boy works his tail off.
He does.
And his whole crew, and the city crew. And if you drive by this office in the evening, you're going to see his light on either early in the morning or late at night, all the time. So you got a lot of people that are putting in a lot of time, and that kind of speaks, I think, to the kind of place that you all have helped make the city work, and I appreciate the support. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I'd like to dovetail on that a little bit, and just thank the council for humoring my late council materials tonight, and especially approving the extra help that we hope to bring onboard. Your consent calendar added considerably to our work list, and we're going to endeavor to make all that happen in our usual efficient way. Also, following up on what Director Martin was just talking about, I just found out about the possibility of the transfer of the property for a new park in the last few days, and so we've been digesting that. Nathan and I have met and discussed that, and he's super excited about it, too, not that he needs anything else to do. But it does raise one other thing that I want to bring to your attention and ask your indulgence for some action on. As you know, we awarded the Fruitdale Road Project tonight to TRICO, and we anticipate having a pre-construction conference probably in, in late April, and starting that project in mid-May or thereabouts, depending on weather. The new site, we are anticipating will be a good location for another caretaker residence, not something as elaborate as we just did at Riverfront, but something just to protect that asset as we've done with our other facilities around town. And also possibly, you know, restroom facility for the public. That is going to be an excellent place for a park, as you can probably imagine, and having those facilities to back up what the Steelhead Club's been doing for years, I think is just a, just a wonderful win-win for us, and for the port, for their coming additional employees that will support the city. And as you know, our project's adding shared-use path to connect to our whole system that we're extending with our other project from Township to Fruitdale on 20, and all the way across town now. So it's just a great news for us, I would say, although it adds to our workload, I think it's the kind of thing that we really want to see accomplished. One thing that I hate to do, and I really hate this, is to build projects and pave roads and then go cut them again. I've, I've done my best to avoid that in my 11 years here and in my entire career. I haven't had to do that very often, and it's only, the only one that I am aware of here is when PUD went down and cut Metcalf after we had paved it just a few years before. And that was over my kicking and screaming that they replaced their line before we paved it. But other than that one, we've been able to avoid that for the most part. So in that, in that spirit, we will need to extend services from the water, sewer, and gas into that site to allow for those, what we anticipate will be other improvements that we'll do to the new park. And I would like to get a plan, similar to what we did at Hauser Park that you authorized in the last two years, prepared so we know roughly where to site those things so we can put them in correctly. To that end, we have Philbin Group under contract already for doing this kind of planning for us at our other facilities. They recently did a plan down for the park down by the library and out at Hauser Field. I would like the council's permission to add a task order to their contract, and it may require an amendment that I would bring back to you later, but I would like to kick them off on, on putting together a, a site plan for that site so we can think about those things and bring you something to look at, and, and also that we can plan when we start our construction to add the sewer and the water services. It'll be fairly easy to do, but if we don't do it before we pave, then we risk having to cut that. So that would be my request, is permission from council to issue a task order to Philbin Group to do a preliminary site plan for the proposed park at the Northern State's facility, the Swift Center.
I would move, we authorize Mark to do that. To extend the contract so that the plan can be...
Any thoughts? Well, is there a second? I have a motion.
Oh, I second that.
Okay.
We'd be foolish not to. We don't want to reopen the newly paved road.
So we have a motion by Councilwoman Denley, seconded by Councilwoman Kinser. Is there any discussion?
Could you restate the motion, please?
So it would be authorization for Public Works Director Freiberger to issue a task order to Philbin Group to prepare a preliminary site plan for the proposed park at the Swift Center.
And this would be primarily to handle the utilities issues.
Right.
That come up on the street, and that we later will get the plans for the utility.
Well, we'll have them do a, kind of an area plan, similar to what you've seen with the others, but I'll be able to report back after we negotiate this with them, the, the cost amount. I don't expect it to be any more than Hauser was, which I believe was under $10,000, but I will bring that back to you later. I just want to get the ball rolling on this so we can be in a timely manner talking to the utilities. We'll have to coordinate this with PUD for the water, and the sewer is located at Wildflower Way. We'll have to definitely make a trench cutting of Fruitdale to get that across to the site and the gas company, wherever they're at. So that's, that's the reason for bringing it to you now, rather than waiting another couple of weeks. We want to get that together, and then I can bring it back to you for...
I didn't mention it would save costs.
Yes.
So, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So, Carrie's authorized for Mr. Freiberger to let the Philbin Group do a preliminary plan for the utilities. Is that what you were saying?
Yes.
Utilities, okay. The costs of that. Anything else?
Oh, I think I've watched you enough tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work, too. Patsy?
Well, I believe council is aware of my upcoming retirement in June. I intend on enjoying the Great Pacific Northwest in the summer, and then in September, October, my husband and I are intending to drive Route 66 and take time to explore everything along the way. We'd like to winter in the sunny south in Arizona, California, and avoid the rainy season here in Washington. That depends somewhat upon the health condition of my 91-year-old mother, so time will tell. But Cedar Wally will always be home. And between now and then, there's lots to do in the Finance Department. I want to make sure you all saw your 2018 final budget. That's a more user-friendly version, easier to show your constituents, different sections, and, you know, hopefully understand a bit better. Bill did send you the link to that, that you can also forward to people and refer folks to look at our website if they want to review that. And we will have a copy or two at our front counter for folks who do not have internet capabilities. The Finance Committee received a draft of our annual report for review, which is part of the internal controls of financial statement requirement for our audit. So if you could kind of look it over, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, and, you know, let me know if you see any obvious typos or misstatements or things. The audit team from the State Auditor's Office will arrive Tuesday. They're doing a 2017 financial statement audit and 2016-17 compliance audit. Are we following all the rules that we're supposed to, basically? They will be in direct contact with council members regarding any meetings, and asking if you have anything you want them to look at. But that will come directly from them, and you are to reply back directly to them, leaving staff out of that communication. And, let's see. The USDA folks came by and did a compliance audit, which, I do a financial report every year. Every three years, they come on site to do a compliance to make sure our building is accessible to all, and that we do not discriminate in services. As an example, that everyone who has a 96-gallon garbage can pays the same rate, that we don't decide we like you and we don't like you, and so we charge differently, those sorts of things. Anyway, they had one recommendation. We're supposed to put on all of our documents that we hand out a, a statement about the fact that we don't discriminate in services, and so we'll be adding that. But everything else looked good, so they'll be back in three more years to do another review. As long as we have the USDA loan on this building, they will come and do that audit. And a lot of the things that they look at are required for any kind of federal funding, be it a transportation grant, a bulletproof vest grant, or, you know, any kind of federal money. And stopped by the Finance Department, we now have an additional desk in our front work area. So we, originally, the design had two desks in front, but only one was purchased at the beginning. This is so Amanda doesn't have to stand or work at the tiny little front counter, she now has a desk, and will be much more comfortable. And we're very grateful to have her working in our department.
So I have to say, when Patsy told us that she was going to leave, there were those of us who were going to lock the door, not let her go, didn't want her to retire. But we do wish you well. It's very premature, because you still have a few more months, but, you know, you have been amazing, and Cedar Wally's very lucky to have had you. I thank you sincerely for your time here. Thank you, Patsy.
I was looking forward to bringing up what a lovely little article there was on the chief's wife in the Skagit Valley Herald. Yes. It was.
Thank you. Brenda?
Yeah, Mark, I guess this would be directed to you, and maybe Chief Tucker might have some input, too, but as was brought up in the previous council meeting about, in public comment, about the corner of Wally Street and State Street. So I've been trying to keep my eye on that corner a little, or that tee, a little bit more, just to see, you know, what, what maybe can be done about it. And as we mentioned, there's already been a parking spot removed, and I've actually observed so many people parking there that a mom with little kids and a cart full of laundry, had to park at the marketplace lot and cross the street there. So I don't see removing another parking spot as a real, real good option there, because sometimes it's full. Sometimes people do have to park across the way. So I'm wondering if possibly making northbound Wally a right turn only, or possibly making it into a southbound only one way again, and definitely trying to reroute as much westbound traffic onto the four-way at Metcalf as possible, because traffic's going to move a lot quicker through that intersection anyway than people trying to turn westbound off of Wally.
I did discuss that matter with David Lee and Nathan Salsina. I don't know that we came to a conclusion on that that I could report back to you, while I don't know what their conclusion was. David is, I believe I mentioned, designing the overlay project through there, and plans on changing the lineage there. There's a turn lane in that vicinity that's going away, which may help, and it's going to add some parking, not directly here, but fairly close. But I will come prepared to report that to the next council meeting to you. We are looking at it.
Okay. And I have talked to quite a few people in the area that have had near missed accident, near accident misses there.
Yes.
It's, it's, it needs addressed in some way, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
There's honestly a lot of issues going on there. There's a business there, it's got a lot of business. You got people parking there constantly for, for the laundromat. There used to even be, is the crosswalk gone from there? It used to be a crosswalk that went straight across from there, and that was, that was never a great idea. I mean, there was some good ideas around it, but it almost lured people into trying to cross in front of traffic, and, and, and if you, if you do stuff like that that isn't in a logical spot, it doesn't work very well. I've seen stop signs put at places that don't make sense, and instead of having people that were just driving what neighbors thought was too fast in the air, we had them people blowing stop signs. So it was, you know, from my view, the, whatever you end up doing there's got to make sense, and it's got to actually work with, you know, accepted practices, because, you know, really that whole area is, you're moving into the congested downtown area, and we're already getting more, more complaints about, well, Carl goes down to the Wally Market, he probably sees people, you know, not complying with crosswalk, you know, crossers. So, I mean, there's, that whole area there is just kind of tight.
Yeah.
And, you know, if you, if you end up making it, say, a right turn only coming northbound, you're going to have people driving left. It's going to happen.
Yeah.
I've seen them run over the curbs out there in front of Food Pavilion, drive right out of Food Pavilion, jump the curb, and thinking, you know what, maybe Joe Jones likes that for stuff that goes to Les Schwab, realignment of cars. But, yeah, it's got, everything we do has got to make sense.
Yeah.
And, you know, and that's more, that's, that is Mark's bailiwick for trying to figure that out.
Thank you. That's all, I guess.
Okay. Thank you, Brenda.
I think that speaking to Brenda just brought up adaptive law, it's just gotten on that corner as well, so they're creating a different issue with traffic in that area. They took apart...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lost a neighbor last night. And we are a close-knit community, and it impacts our neighborhood, our ward, and our city. I would like to thank the amazing response of Cedar Wully Fire Department. I believe they got there within two minutes. I'd also like to thank the Fire Department for responding with everyone. I understand there were over 20 responders. And in turn, the region helped out Cedar Wully with the county fire supplementing the gap that was left for coverage because everyone was responding. So it has moved us. I would like to remind folks that you can get a free fire detector through the American Red Cross. And if you can't afford one, or you think of someone that needs one, please encourage them to take that step with the American Red Cross and make sure they have a charged battery in their smoke detector. I'd like to thank the Fire Department, as I said, and also thank the Police Department for their activities, and also the Public Works. I was out there this morning, noticed Public Works working hard on making sure the gas was turned off and other utilities that keep the neighborhood safe. And it is a close-knit neighborhood, and we're going to miss that person. Another city business, we met as a utility committee, so I would yield back to Councilmember Kelly if she wanted to talk about that.
Well, I was pretty impressed by the information about recycling. I learned a lot of things I didn't know about recycling. Some of it was like, oh, no. But there was, one of the things that I think is really important...
What on am I? Thank you. Was that our prices are going to go up. And it isn't something that the city, it's not on the city. It's on the fact that those people who actually take the waste from us for recycling are going to be going from $37 per tonne to $84. And that's going to impact everybody out there. And then they're not going to take us much. They're not going to take everything that we think we can put in there today. But I did learn that we can put more in our compost bins than I thought. For example, did you know that you could put your pizza box in there? Because that's a, you know, it was something that I never quite knew what to do with because it's got food on it, but I can't quite wash it like I do my plastics, and so, you know, I was really glad to hear that. And evidently, that's not a hard thing for them to break down up at Skagit soils. Skagit soils is local, and so that's a good thing, too, that it's not being shipped to China or across the ocean where it might fall off the boat and get into the Texas-sized thing full of plastics. The other thing with the plastics, though, is you're going to have to pay a lot more attention to your plastics and what you're putting in there. There's a bunch of companies that are trying to have plastics made primarily just for them, and that's a really bad thing because those products then have to be separated out individually. So you want to pay attention to what that label says on it, whether or not it can go in there. The other thing is glass. We may end up having to have people sort their glass out of their recycling because recyclable glass is still recyclable, but it shouldn't be put in with your paper and plastic products. So I learned a lot. I don't know about you, but that's what I learned. And then Mark came in and talked to us about the Beatty Project and the sewer issues, and that was all interesting as well because I didn't realize how these different stations actually have to connect in order to make those kind of corners and turns and get to the, where we want it to go. But thank you, Mark. I appreciated that information. And to Leo, who's not here. Thank you, Leo.
If I may continue, Mayor? If I may continue? Thanks, Paul. So we did not have a planning committee meeting, of which I'm the chair of, and I did take my Sunday stroll through the neighborhood, where I spent some hours talking to neighbors about how we're doing as a city and what we could be doing better. I had a question for John, who's gone, and a question for Aaron, who's gone, so I will take that up with him at another time. We are, I wanted to talk a little bit to frame about the Planning Commissioner appointment. I would like to make sure that we had a note that if you're interested in serving on a board or commission, please let the mayor know. This is citizen advisory committees, and we need a well-diverse group of folks to help serve the city and help your representatives here make policy. I think a note for the person that resigned, Stephanie, who was a person of temperament that worked well in a group and knew what it took to get policy formed up to the council. And I just wanted to acknowledge the hard work that she had put in and looking forward to the next iteration of the Planning Commission.
And we're actually going to honor her at the next council.
Oh.
Yeah, on April 11th.
Okay. I didn't see that on the agenda, so that's why I'm bringing it up in my report.
Yeah, yeah. April 11th.
Okay. So I wasn't aware of that, so I'm sorry if I'm stepping on anyone's toes there. Also, in the Ward, we look forward to your participation for a wonderful event that is put on by the, is there someone here from the Wild Steelhead Club? I reached out to them to talk to us a little bit about the Easter egg hunt at Riverfront Park, which is also in Ward 6. And they have a spectacular event that I know lots of folks are eager to go to, so I hope we can...
Don't be late.
What's that?
Don't be late.
Yeah, boom, they start on time. So be there or miss out. But it's a lot of fun, and I hope the community will rally and be down there. And if I think of something, I'll talk about it good to the order. Thank you.
All right, Jared?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. I wanted to make the council aware, and I believe I made the mayor aware already. I went ahead and stepped down from the Cedar Wully Downtown Association Board. I, due to my involvement with that predating Pola's taking of office with council, I didn't feel that it was appropriate that there was two council members on the board. That's an area of Pola's expertise. So I look forward to supporting that as a council member. I know a lot of the council has spoken favor of that, and I will continue to do so, just not as a board member. I do, I just want to thank our Fire Department for what they did and what they do on a daily basis. I can't reiterate enough how lucky we are in Cedar Wully to have the group of volunteers that we have. I don't have the exact figure, but I'm sure Patsy knows it off the top of her head, but our volunteer salary rate is miniscule compared to what cities spend on full-time paid firefighters. And the fact that we had 22, 23 firefighters respond to a residential house fire in our city is absolutely amazing, because you wouldn't find that in Burlington, Mount Vernon, or Anacortes, I guarantee it. Because if it happened in Burlington or Mount Vernon, there would be a mutual aid request for Cedar Wully to come help them. So we should be very proud of the public servants and first responders that we have in our city. I have nothing else to report on.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your reports. We will now open up the public comment. It is 8:04. Anyone who would like to come forward and give public comment, please do. I would like to remind you that you have three minutes, and if you could give your name and address prior to your comment, that would be great. Is there anyone who would like to give public comment? Okay. I will close public comment at 8:04. And I believe, let's see here, we have the informational items. I don't know if there's any questions regarding that. I see some of it, John, part of it is for John, he wouldn't be here. Are there any questions regarding the informational items? Otherwise, we will move on. And now we will move into executive session under RCW 42.30.1101G. Will be probably about 10 minutes. You don't have to stay if you don't want to. So at this point, I will ask the council members to move into executive session.
It is 8:13, and we are back from executive session. Coming in high intervals.
I would like to move that we adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned, thank you.
I didn't even sit back down.